Thank you for those who are here in person and for those who are live streaming. I will ask our Board Secretary to take a role to establish a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. President Craighead?
Here.
Member Benitez?
Was that me, Letitia?
Yes.
I'm here too.
Member Miller?
Here.
Member Otto?
Here.
And student member Aguilar?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And now we will have our pledge of allegiance. I understand we have Lizette from Jordan to lead us in our pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which is stands one nation under God, individual and with liberty and justice for all.
And now we will have some comments by our student board representative, Axel.
Black History Month celebrates and honors the achievements, contributions, and the impact that Black and African Americans have had on the United States. Knowledge of Black history with all its joys, struggles, and triumphs affirms identity and provides us with lessons on how individuals and communities have problem solve challenges in order to seek justice. Studying Black history allows us to see that history is not dead but alive and illuminating as we strive to better understand our world. Thank you.
Thank you, Axel. For those of you who are present in the room, the board appreciates and supports community input at our meetings. During the meeting, there will be time for the public to comment on matters on the agenda and matters not on the agenda. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms here by our board secretary. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form with your name and the agenda item you wish to address. The board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda. The board took action on the following items. Item 3.1, Confidential Student Matters pursuant to California Education Code 35146. The board voted 5-0 to expel two students. The first student, ID number 3203, is expelled in compliance with Education Code Section 48900N, and this student will not be eligible to apply for readmission. The second student, ID number 4157, is expelled in compliance with Education Code Section 48915C1 and will be eligible to apply for readmission after the 2024-25 fall semester. Both students were recommended to be considered for a suspended expulsion with an opportunity to attend another school within the district. The board also voted 5-0 to readmit six students, ID numbers 7352, 2130, 9387, 8733, 5764, and 8120. Regarding item 3.3, the board voted 5-0 to approve a settlement agreement in the case listed on the agenda. On item 3.6, the board voted 5-0 to approve a final settlement and general release regarding the cases listed on the agenda. On item 3.7, the board voted 5-0 regarding the dismissal of an employee. And on item 3.8, the board voted 5-0 to approve the appointment of Maruna... and somebody help me with the last name so I don't...
Lascar.
Lascar. Did I say that okay? Sorry, Maruna. As the Director of Special Education for the District, but congratulations, Maruna, is what I'd like to say. Adoption of the agenda. Before we adopt the agenda, I want to make a change. We need to move item 14.9 to 15.2. We need to take that item out of the Consent Calendar A and move it to Consent Calendar B. So when we're voting on the agenda, that's what we'll be voting on, that amendment. Does anybody else have any other changes, any other considerations? Then we need...
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Our student board representative with a preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Then the agenda has been adopted as amended. Now, we have the pleasure of meeting our student representative from Jordan. So Lizette, it is your turn to give a presentation. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Baker, board members, and LVUSD staff and guests. My name is Lisera Nahy Enriquez, and I am the Student Body President at Jordan High School. I am a senior in Jordan's Media and Communication Pathway, and I am honored to present to you all today. I am a true North Side kid. I attended McKinley Elementary, then continued to Hamilton Middle School, where I was in ASB for two years. Now at Jordan, I have been part of the Student Leadership Program with ASB for also two years. I am a former volleyball player, but this year I had the amazing opportunity to make history as a participant in the Moore League's first ever girls' black football season. We finished second in the league and are very excited to continue building this program. We've had a wonderful start to this school year. Jordan's enrollment is continuing to grow with all of our beautiful new facilities. It's brought great pride to the North Side. We opened a brand-new building at the beginning of the school year, our 12,000 building, where our beautiful new Ames Lab spaces are located. Our three-story science building reopened in January after major renovations, and the Plaza area buildings have taken our campus to the next level, and we are not done yet. The next phase of construction begins in May with the start of our athletics field. The social scene and student life at Jordan continues to thrive. Our focus the last few years has been making our students feel connected to our school and creating more opportunities for the students' engagement. We made a big push-through with the Link Crew to get our ninth graders involved and make them feel supported. We had a great homecoming turnout with 29 clubs participating and a beautiful horse and carriage for a halftime show. It was a great, a lot of fun, a lot of fun for that week. A few other events ASB and other clubs have hosted include a haunted house for Halloween, Becco Dance Night, freshman mixer, senior jeans painting, movie night under the stars, Hispanic Heritage Month activities, and a month of kindness and gratitude activities. Our pathways are also on fire. On January 18th, we had a very successful site night with over 400 people in attendance. We got to show off the great things our pathways are doing. Our Advanced Manufacturing, Construction, and Engineering Program, known as ACE, had an informative mentoring session with over 15 industry professionals sharing their experiences with students. The Jordan Media and Communication Pathway, JMAC, seniors are headed to LBCC and excited to participate in the Meet the Arts Program. The LEAPs Program, which is Law, Emergency, and Public Service, continues in building connections with Long Beach Police and Fire Departments. This year, they've started an advisory board comprised with multiple public services agencies in Long Beach. This has helped bridge the communication and positive relationships within our community. I am very excited about graduating this year, but I must say this transformation of Jordan has been amazing to watch and to be a part of, so please continue to keep your eyes on the North. Thank you all for your time.
Wait a minute before you sit down. So we probably have some questions for you. Did you mention you were a senior?
Yes.
So what are your plans for next year?
So my plan for next year is I will be attending LBCC for two years, and my plan is to transfer out after those two years to UCI and major in Business and Economics and minor in Psychology.
Wow. Well, that's very impressive. We wish you all the luck. Were there any other questions or anything? No, then I speak for the group when I give you these well wishes. Thank you for being here tonight.
Of course.
After we recognize our retiree, we'll have a little bit of a break for pictures, so if you could stick around a little bit?
Okay.
That'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you so much. Okay, and next, we're going to recognize a retiree. So Ms. Viola May, would you please come to the lectern? So, thank you for being here so that we could recognize your service, actually over 31 years of service, and you are retiring as an instructional aide at Cabrillo High School. And we praise you for being highly professional, caring, and an experienced instructional assistant in the art classroom, getting to know all students, including their individualized education plans and particular needs, in order to personalize and support their instruction and classroom experience, and for supporting the social-emotional growth of students, being a dependable colleague and excellent communicator. So please accept this certificate that Letitia will be handing you for your 31 years of dedicated service to the Long Beach Unified School District and your lasting contributions to the lives of thousands of students. And also, I know that you are always here, supporting your colleagues, supporting everyone else, so we thank you.
Thank you so much. They don't count the years I worked at High Hill and also the years I worked at Head Start, so it's actually 34 years with the district. But again, like I said, they don't count High Hill. I have worked in all levels of special ed in my time with the district. And my journey into special ed actually started when I was in fifth, sixth grade at Webster Elementary School, when I started working with the special ed students that we had there. I have been in Long Beach long enough to have worked with the students at Nightingale, for those of you who have been in Long Beach long enough to recognize that name. So I have been around a while. I will miss my kids, and they are all my kids, and people know when there is special ed around that to mess with my kids, or they're going to hear it from me. I have worked with many of the people that are on this board in the district. I've been on many committees with the district. I've been on a couple interview committees to interview people who wanted to become principals. I've also worked on renaming with Jill, renaming school sites and buildings within school. I've worked a lot with the district through CSCE as a classified employee, working well in negotiations and a few other capacities. I won't be going away in that respect. My chapter has given me lifetime membership in the chapter, so therefore I am still going to be around as a job steward, as somebody who is active with CSCE, and I will still be here. But I will say this: I am leaving tonight after this to celebrate with my family. I have my wonderful niece, Davida. Ms. Gall, she is a newly contracted special ed teacher with Long Beach. She also worked for, what, like about 15 years as an instructional aide? As an instructional aide. My nephew, Michael, where did he go? Oh, standing in back? My nephew, Michael, who works for Amvets, and his wife, Liza, who works at Long Beach State College, right? And then my nephew, Lauren, and his wife, Danielle. Lauren works at one of the refineries back here, and his wife is a stay-at-home with their two children. So I have here my great nieces and nephews, who are the third generation of Long Beach Unified School District, and I will probably be the only one who didn't graduate from Poly as they're all Poly. Although I did go one year while we still lived over here on the West Side, and then we moved to North Long Beach, and I ended up at Jordan, class of 1975. So again, thank you so much for this.
So at this time, we will have our student representative from Jordan come up here and do a picture. And then, Viola May, we're not letting you go. We're going to have you come up here. So we'll go ahead and just do some quick pictures. Okay, we're going to go ahead and continue with the meeting. We have a very packed agenda, so I'm going to power on. Next on the agenda, we have... Oh, did we have a video? Oh, okay. A quick video.
I would describe Jefferson as a very caring and supportive environment. We look to our students to kind of drive what we're doing and what our ideas are. If I don't have a relationship with my teacher, I'm not going to learn from my teacher. One thing that I am really excited about our Jefferson teachers is they look for ways to build relationships with students. One of our math teachers, Karina Rodriguez, decided to be on the early implementers of building thinking classrooms. Now, when you walk into a math class, students are all standing, they're all doing the work. It has changed the game for math at Jefferson, and students are doing really well. We changed up our master schedule so that all of our students are in co-teach, and we saw significant gains for our students with IEPs in both Language Arts and Math. So those are some examples of making system changes and seeing results. We survey our students all the time. We have new clubs every year based on student interest. Right now, we have Guitar Club, we have Gardening Club, we have Gaming Club. The list goes on and on. You don't know until you ask what kids are interested in. Like, we had no idea that they would want to ride in the golf cart, and that's something that's so simple, but it's something that they can work for and they're really excited Student voice is huge. We're always listening to students.
I know the videos are short, but they're always very impactful, and it's always good to know what's going on around the district. So thank you for that, staff. Next on the agenda, we have public testimony. So we will start with testimony on items on the agenda, and we have quite a few. So I'm going to ask people, if they could, don't feel it's necessary to take up your full three minutes, because we have a lot of people, and we want an opportunity to hear from everybody, so if you could come under your three minutes just a little bit, we'll be able to squeeze everybody in. But just a reminder, you do get three minutes, and we will start with Charles Brown.
Thank you. Honorable Presidents, Superintendent, and Board Members, my name is Charles Brown, and I am representing the Long Beach Community Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative Collaborative. This august group of folks here representing agencies, community organizations, and leaders within our community that are dedicated towards not just the curtailment, but the elimination of violence and its impacts on our communities. We are here to support the new proposed MOU agreement for West Long Beach Safe Routes to the school program. I will not read the entire support letter, but I will state this first part. The pandemic has exposed the need for public health infrastructure that supports safety as well as well-being of impacted school and park communities. Long Beach Unified School District can become a model for the rest of the nation on how to restore and heal our most wounded school neighborhoods. On behalf of the Long Beach Community Violence Intervention and Prevention Collaborative and Central CHA, we support the district's recommendation to approve the new proposed agreement contract with Central CHA to provide safe routes to school programs in West Long Beach for the term 1124 to 63024. I just wanted to make a brief comment on this. February 26, 2005, 15-year-old Cabrillo High School junior was shot to death in a gang confrontation. On January 21 of 2023, 17-year-old Khalid Saleem was killed in exchange of gunfire on the basketball court at Silverado Park. The one death that I will always remember is on March 13, 2015. 15-year-old freshman Kishan Brooks was stabbed to death over a backpack. Anitra Dempsey, who was then the Human Dignity Officer for the City of Long Beach, and I visited the family of Kishan shortly after his murder, in an effort to show support and provide whatever comfort we could, and we experienced the abject pain and sorrow from his mother, who could hear nothing that could console her or provide substantive answers to why she could lose such a precious gift to a senseless act of violence, which also robbed another youth of his freedom, the perpetrator, scarring his future and life forever. This program is very simple, straightforward act of support for all families in this area who have children attending the listed schools. It is only the beginning to address the elimination of senseless violence in our communities in the Long Beach city.
Thank you. Next, we have Danny. Danny Flores.
Good afternoon, good evening, Long Beach Unified School District Board Members. My name is Danny Flores. I am a parent of two students in Long Beach Unified School District. I'm also retired city employee. I worked in a variety of programs with youth since 1988. For the past 30 years, I've been working in the city of Long Beach on a variety of different programs in low-income communities, gang-involved youth. My overall goal was and is to enhance the quality of life, to build leaders in mentoring and providing pathways to careers and education. I'm here today because, as a parent, I have a fear for my children walking to and from school due to the increase of violence, not only in Long Beach but across the nation. I'm strongly urging you to pass the Safe Passages that promote safety at Cabrillo High and Stevens Middle School. In the past, I have provided safe passages at Stevens and Cabrillo and Washington Middle School. I had strong communication with parents, school, and administration, youth, students, and community members. I provided communication to all collaborating partners of the trends and activities that go on in these groups that cause violence in the communities. I'm trained by Urban Institute of Los Angeles, and I have an eye... trained eye for conflicts before it even starts. I prevented fights and other dangerous conflicts in Long Beach in the West Side Schools and the Washington School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Joslyn Sanchez. Next, we have Jocelyn Sanchez.
Good afternoon, my name is Jocelyn Sanchez. I'm 21 years old, and I graduated from Cabrillo High School in 2021. My high school year wasn't really the best since there was a lot of gang violence. Bye-bye. And as an older sister who was, who has two brothers still attending school, I would feel more comfortable if the program Safe Passages will be passed. I wouldn't have to worry about my brothers going through the same things. Do the same things I did when I was attending school. In my honest opinion, I feel like West Side Long Beach needs the Safe Passages program.
Thank you. Next, we have Ladine Chan.
First and foremost, I just want to applaud the speaker before me for being able to share your story, so, thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Jill Baker and Board members. My name is Ladine Chan, a program manager for a youth program called EM3 Educated Men with Meaningful Messages in Long Beach. 20 years' experience working with youth. Many of our youth are from different high schools here in Long Beach. For me, a proud Poly alumni, go Jackrabbits, and also a member of the Long Beach Community Violence Intervention Prevention Initiative Collaborative. I urge the board to pass the Safe Passages Proposal, a program specifically designed for Cabrillo High School and Stevens Middle School. The initiative aims to ensure the safety of our students, both and on school grounds and during their commutes. Investing in the programs like Safe Passages is essential in, to maintaining a secure learning environment. Every, every student deserves to feel safe traveling to and from school, and this proposal is critical to fulfilling that commitment. The board should recognize the significant impact that initiative would have on student safety, and I kindly request your support on passing the Safe Passages Proposal for Cabrillo High School and Stevens Middle School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Valerie Cruz.
Hello, my name is Valerie Cruz, a proud resident of the West Side community for my entire 29 years. As a single mother of two young boys attending Webster Elementary, I am a strong supporter of the Safe Passages program and believe it will bring numerous benefits to West Long Beach. One, ensuring that our, that, I'm sorry, ensuring the safety of our children on the journey, on their journey home is crucial. They should be able to walk without the constant worries of encountering someone with disrespectful intentions. The, I'm sorry, second, the presence of potential predators in the area is concerning. It's unpredictable what might be going on in their heads as they pass by our children, highlighting they need, highlighting the need for a secure environment. Three, gang activity is an ongoing issue, not only in the West Side but throughout Long Beach. Gangs can, gangs show no regard for a child's well-being based on their color, treating them as an enemy. Our children shouldn't have to endure such challenges as it leads to problems and conflicts with each other's families. Four, it is essential for our kids to stay safe and have the assurance that they will make it home safe without any threats. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kareem.
Hello, my name is Kareem. I am a Long Beach resident. I myself attended Stevens Middle School and graduated from Cabrillo High School, and I am here so you guys can support Safe Passages. This is something that we've done in the past, 2016 through 2018. We've seen firsthand how great this was for the youth, how much support we put out there, the difference it makes to be out there an hour before school starts, an hour after school ends. I have nieces and nephews that attend these schools. I have my daughter that goes to Garfield. I encourage for this to pass and stay ongoing, not just a trial period, but something to continue happening for us as working parents to feel safe sending our kids to these schools and for our kids to also have that encouragement of, we take care of safety, you focus on learning, growing, and becoming somebody tomorrow. So please take all these factors into consideration. Help us help our children sit in these chairs in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Rebecca. Rebecca?
Muy buenas tardes a todos, mi nombre es Rebeca Ibañez. Tengo un hijo en la escuela Washington. Empecé de voluntaria con Habitat, con el programa de pase seguro desde hace dos años, pero el programa ha iniciado desde el 2018 y ha sido parte de impacto que ha tenido con mi comunidad, ya que el programa me ha permitido hacer contacto con los estudiantes y el cambio con los padres de ellos. Y estoy y con experiencia aquí para incrementar en las escuelas Cabrillo, Stevens, y a más escuelas en el futuro. Teniendo una renumeración por tiempo y servicio y lograr motivar a más comunidad, preparándoles, equipar con todo, llevando para lograr esta misión para nuestro bienestar, bienestar de nuestra familia. Por favor, tomen en consideración apoyar este pase seguro en el distrito de Long Beach, patrocinado por Centro CHA. Gracias.
My name is Rebeca Ibañez. I have a child at Washington School. I started as a volunteer with Habitat with the Safe Passage Program two years ago, but the program began in 2018, and I have been part of the impact it's had in my community because the program has allowed me to have contact with students and see the change with their parents. I am bringing my experience here in order for you to increase this program at Cabrillo and Stevens and maybe more schools. Maybe in the future, compensation can be offered to the volunteers for their time and service, and with this motivating the community, preparing and equipping them to achieve this mission with all it entails. This for the well-being of our families. Please consider supporting the Safe Passages Program sponsored by Centro CHA at Long Beach Unified School District. Thank you in advance.
Thank you. Next, we have Herlinda.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Herlinda Arro.
Good afternoon, my name is Herlinda Arro.
Actualmente tengo dos hijos en la escuela Cabrillo. Ellos utilizan el transporte público, y mi mayor preocupación siempre la entrada y de salida.
I have two children at Cabrillo High School, and they use public transportation. My main concern is before school and after school.
Que es cuando hay un mayor número de incidentes de violencia. También viendo que la escuela está cerca donde se forman grupos de estudiantes y pandillas. Esta zona es muy traficada como es la Santa Fe.
Also, they're in an area where there is lots of incidents of violence. A lot of student, group of students gather, also groups of gangs along Santa Fe Avenue.
La parada del bus está a la vuelta de la esquina y no siempre se sabe a dónde ir a la hora de, de un incidente de violencia.
The bus stop is, bus stop is placed at the corner, so you don't always know where to go when there is a, an incident involving violence.
Mis hijos han acudido a la escuela Edison, a la Escuela Chavez, a la Washington, y, y no conocen el área. Por ejemplo, no vivimos en el área de la Cabrillo. Solamente acuden ahí a la escuela, y ellos no saben a dónde ir. No tienen a un familia cerquitas. Tienen amigos, pero no van a estar ahí cercas cuando algo ocurre como un incidente de violencia.
My children have attended Edison, Chavez, Washington, so they're not familiar with the area around Cabrillo. They attend Cabrillo, but we don't have any family members or friends nearby, and they wouldn't know where to go if any violence occurs.
Lo que les digo es que si ven algo, digan algo, y por eso me gustaría que pongan a pase seguro para que tengan ahí una persona de confianza a donde acudir.
So what I tell them is if they see something to, if they see something, say something, so that, that's why I'm asking that you establish the Safe Passage Program, so that they have someone to go to and if, if anything happens.
Necesitamos que Pase Seguro que sea financiado durante varios años y que sea implementado por organizaciones de confianza de Long Beach.
We need the Safe Passage Program to be supported financially for, for several years and also for it to be provided by community, que se proporciona por agencias, coordinated with Long Beach organizations.
Y cada día pasan incidentes, y ahorita está pasando en esta área Cabrillo, y por lo que es la, la área de la escuela de la Santa Fe, por favor, si pueden, hagan algo. Ahorita está comenzando ahí, y a rato se va a extender a otro lugar.
Every, incidents occur every day around the Cabrillo area along Santa Fe, so it's starting there now, but then it will eventually expand to other areas.
Pase seguro, por favor.
Safe passage, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jessica.
Hello, good evening, Jessica Quintana. Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Baker, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here, members of the board, and also Tiffany, just want to give you a big shout-out. I know it's really difficult to talk about, you know, some of the violence that happens in, in West Long Beach, and I think you all know, you know, providing education, you know, in this district, how long this district has really suffered disinvestments. This community has a long history of disinvestments, economic development, you know, really addressing opportunities for pathways to higher education. The majority of workers that live in the West Side are low-wage workers, and so there's not a lot of opportunity. We have two parks in the whole West Side area. You know, we have refineries that surround the whole area, so we have high issues of environmental issues. If we didn't have the bridge that went over the, to the west, to, to East Long Beach, those two bridges, we'd be an island. You know, this has been long-term in our community, and so, as you know, just recently with the economic downturn and the pandemic, really put us even further behind. So if you already had students and families already, you know, having trauma and living in poverty and health disparities, well, the pandemic just really pushed us back even more. And so I just, you know, want to urge again the board to really support this. Not only, you know, it's great that we have an investment up until June, but these type of programs are, it's critical that we continue the funding because then you're, you're able to establish that, that partnership in the community. You're able to really uplift the, the students and the parents and create that safety. What happens when you stop and start, then you have this whole gap again to start up, costs way more money than continue these programs that we know are effective, they're evidence-based, they're culturally appropriate, they're age-appropriate, and they really reduce violence in the communities. And so, you know, we just want to urge the board members and to really support this and, you know, also thank you for the conversations that we've had. It's important that our district, being the second-largest district in the county, but also one of the largest districts in the state, that we take these type of bold investments into our community and ensuring that we have safety for our children. Because as you know, economics and poverty, you know, really have to have the same type of safety as other areas in our communities for our youth and families to be able to live, work, and thrive. So again, we want to thank you on behalf of Centro CHA and our collaborative. We're working very hard to change the narrative in our community, and so that has been shown by the 1.5 million investment that we received from the Department of Justice for the first time ever. So thank you.
Next, we have Alfredo. Alfredo?
Good afternoon, board members. I'm here to speak a bit on the Safe Passages and keeping the youth safe. I myself did the Safe Passages Program in West Long Beach at Stevens and Cabrillo, and I'm just here to tell you that this works. We made sure that our kids got home safe. And I want to thank all the women here that came from Washington Middle School. My daughter attends Washington Middle School, and I want to thank them because they make sure that she comes home every night. So, on behalf, thank you. Thank you, guys. I just, it just, I can't stress it enough that we need this long-term investment, and this investment, our kids are investment. That, our children is the future, so we want to make sure that they're safe, they come home every day, and become something in this world. So I want to thank you guys, and on that note, you guys have a great night.
Thank you. Lilia Ocampo?
Hola, buenas tardes o noches, no sé. Mi nombre es Lilia Ocampo, y tengo dos hijos en la escuela Washington, y el año que viene van a ser, su escuela de casa es Cabrillo. Entonces estoy preocupada porque escucho todos los episodios de violencia que pasan durante escuela, antes, después de escuela, entonces, pues sí, estoy preocupada por mis hijos. También soy voluntaria de Pase Seguro en la escuela Washington, aunque últimamente no he estado activa por situaciones de, de mi vida que me han pasado, pero... quiero decir que ese programa funciona, nosotros lo hemos implementado. La mayoría de las compañeras que están atrás son parte de, han sido, y, y este, ayuda, ayuda a los niños. Uno puede notar el cambio cuando empezamos a hacerlo, y después ya los, los estudiantes nos reconocían, los padres también. Incluso cuando no estaba yo haciendo el programa, si yo tenía que pasar, me daban el pase, y pues creo que estamos construyendo comunidad y que este, este programa debe de pasar para apoyar a las escuelas que los necesitan, sobre todo las escuelas que tenemos en las áreas de bajos recursos.
Okay, so good afternoon, good evening, my name is Lilia Ocampo. I have two children at Washington School. Next year, they will attend Cabrillo High School as that is their school of residence, and so I am concerned because of the violence that is occurring before and after school. I have been a volunteer with this Safe Passage Program at Washington Middle School, and this, this program works. It, it helps children. We can see the difference from when we be, first begin the program to, they, the students begin to recognize us. Even, I wasn't very active for a while for personal reasons, but the students still recognize me, and I was also, and also the volunteers allowed me to, to pass.
Por eso les pido que por favor apoyen este programa de pase seguro para las escuelas Cabrillo y Stevens en, por parte del Centro CHA. Gracias por su atención.
And so I ask you to support this program for Cabrillo and for Stevens, this by Centro CHA. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. That was great. We heard from everybody on items not listed on, or listed on the agenda, so thank you for that. Now we are at public testimony on items not listed on the agenda, and we have quite a few, so I'm gonna remind everybody, we only have 30 minutes for this topic, so 30 minutes for items not listed on the agenda. So if, if you can make your comments within those three minutes so that we have a chance to hear from everybody, that would be appreciated. So let's go ahead and start. We have Cecilia.
Ladies and gentlemen...
Madres y señores de la Junta de Educación, mi nombre es Cecilia Rogers. Hoy estoy ante ustedes como una estudiante de séptimo grado pasionada y determinada de la escuela de Cabrillo a K-8, lista para defender mi futuro. Es esencial abordar el impacto negativo que ofrecen los descuentos presupuestarios de Cabrillo en nuestra capacidad de decidir cuál es el camino de la escuela secundaria así como nuestro viaje a empezar a pensar en una posible elección de carrera para el futuro. La educación es la clave que abre las puertas al éxito y al limitar nuestros recursos, obstaculizamos nuestro potencial. Creo que es genial que el distrito escolar tenga una visión ambiciosa de 2035. Sin embargo, les estoy exigiendo que tengan la misma visión para los graduados de 2024 a 2034 también. Estos descuentos presupuestarios no están alineados con la portada de los graduados o la portada del sistema que se supone que se debe reimaginar en 2035. No olvidemos que somos tus futuros líderes, médicos, ingenieros, propietarios de negocios y artistas. Somos los que harán con el mundo y harán una diferencia. La calidad de tu vida dependerá de cómo inviertas en nosotros y como heredaremos este mundo un día. Sin embargo, sin las herramientas adecuadas o oportunidades, ¿cómo podemos alcanzar nuestro potencial total? Los descuentos presupuestarios proponen sacar de la vida las recursos vitales como español, arte y otras oportunidades como tecnología, todos los cuales son cruciales para prepararnos para los desafíos que se sitúan adelante. He visitado las escuelas de la noche en varias escuelas recientemente y es claro cómo tener un crédito de uno a dos de español desde la escuela secundaria sería una ventaja para mi éxito. Pero estos descuentos presupuestarios tomarán mi oportunidad, dejándome con menos crédito y teniendo que empezar el currículum de nuevo. La preparación de carrera y carrera no comienza en la escuela secundaria. Empieza el primer día en la escuela secundaria. Sin embargo, son los años de la escuela secundaria los verdaderos semillas planteadas. Mis objetivos de carrera incluyen perseguir el arte y este año es el primer que he tenido la clase formal de arte en la escuela. Los días en los que tengo arte son mis preferidos en la escuela porque puedo practicar algo que quiero hacer en mi futuro. Le pido que no ignore los artistas de Cabrillo y dé a todos los estudiantes la oportunidad de crear durante sus años K-8. Los descuentos presupuestarios proponen no solo afectar nuestra creencia académica sino también limitar la disponibilidad de oportunidades de exploración de carrera que ofrecen los electores. Es tu deber como Junta de Educación asegurar que cada estudiante tiene acceso a una educación de calidad que lo prepara para el futuro. Les exijo que reconsideren los descuentos presupuestarios proponidos. No solo estás invirtiendo en nuestro futuro, estás invirtiendo en el futuro de nuestra comunidad, nuestra nación y nuestro mundo. Gracias por su tiempo y consideración, Cecilia Rogers.
Buen dicho, Cecilia, buen dicho. Siguiente, tenemos a Emily.
Señoras y señores de la Junta de Educación, mi nombre es Emily Brower Rogers. Mis hijas asisten a Cabrillo. Cecilia está en séptimo grado y Madeline está en cuarto grado. Estoy aquí hoy preguntándoles a reconsiderar los descuentos presupuestarios proponidos para nuestra escuela. Me gustaría defender porque estos descuentos afectarán negativamente no solo a ambos de mis hijas sino a los cientos de otros estudiantes que asisten a la escuela. Mi hija Cecilia aspira a perseguir un trabajo en arte y este año fue su primera clase formal en sus años K-7 en Cabrillo. Bueno, han habido pequeños programas adicionales financiados por el PTA. Ninguna ha sido formal o permanente, a pesar de la ley de California que requiere un currículo de arte en el aula y Prop 28 proporcionando financiamiento para este propósito. La clase de la doctora Bober y su syllabus fueron una respuesta refrescante a esto donde permite que los estudiantes sepan una variedad de habilidades y técnicas artísticas en todo el país. Nunca he visto una syllabus de escuela secundaria tan thoughtful e inspiradora. Finalmente tenemos un instructor dedicado que no solo proporciona electrocutaciones artísticas a la escuela secundaria sino también proporciona una enrichida currículum de arte en toda la escuela secundaria. No podemos perder este currículo integral para nuestra escuela. Bajo los descuentos presupuestarios proponidos, también estaríamos perdiendo español. Los requisitos A a G necesarios para la universidad pedirán dos años de español y estos pueden ser cumplidos por cursos de escuela secundaria. No sé por qué tomarían un curso que permite que los estudiantes salgan adelante para la escuela secundaria así como dar flexibilidad para otros electores que quizás quieran perseguir. Sé que hay innumerables estudios que muestran que aprender un idioma es más fácil cuanto mayor se empieza. Esto también añade valor a la escuela secundaria de Cabrillo con el rigor académico que mantenemos altamente allí. Cuando miramos las escuelas secundarias, esta fue una de las razones por las que elegimos Cabrillo. Realizo que una de las razones por las que los descuentos están sucediendo es debido a menor adquisición. Sin embargo, si no tenemos las mismas ofertas que permiten que los estudiantes avancen sus estudios, sospecho que otros no elegirían la escuela porque las escuelas dentro y fuera del distrito en cambio tendrán programas de lengua más fuertes. Esto solo conducirá a un ciclo perpetuo, creando más descuentos en los programas de nuestra escuela. Mi familia valora la educación que mis hijos han recibido en Cabrillo y la cercana comunidad que proporciona la escuela K-8. Por favor, muestren a nuestros hijos que valoran su educación también al proporcionar recursos adecuados y financiamiento para continuar un currículum completo que está en el corazón de la filosofía de LBUSD. Gracias.
Gracias. Siguiente, tenemos a Melissa. Melissa.
Buenas tardes, miembros de la Junta de Educación de Long Beach. Mi nombre es Melissa Rosette y mi hija Hazel actualmente es una cuarta clase de Minnegan. Hoy estoy ante ustedes como una madre preocupada, profundamente preocupada por el plan propuesto de dividir la escuela secundaria Minnegan por las renovaciones de medida E durante el año próximo de 2024-2025. Strongemente opuso la noción de desplazar a la mitad de los estudiantes, los terceros a quinto grados, y alterar su entorno educacional. Una de las soluciones propuestas, requerir que los niños lleguen a Gant pronto para atravesar el autobús a las 7:15 a.m., presenta una dificultad significativa para familias como las mías. Somos una familia de escuela de elección. Actualmente, nuestro residente se encuentra a una drive de 15 minutos de Gant en la dirección opuesta de Monroe. Asegurarse de que la llegada onesta del autobús necesitaría despertar a mi adolescente de 10 años a 6 a.m. diariamente. Preguntar a los jóvenes a adherirse a tales momentos de despertar temprano riesga efectos desagradables en su atención, comportamiento, aprendizaje y bienestar general. Además, la alternativa de conducir a nuestros hijos a Monroe nosotros imponería una vuelta de un hora adicional para mi familia, posiblemente dos veces diariamente, una imposibilidad logística para familias con trabajos de tiempo completo. La viaje de mi hija a Gant comenzó en el kindergarten en el otoño de 2019. Sin embargo, su experiencia fue abruptamente alterada por el inicio de COVID en 2020. Nunca tuvo la oportunidad de completar su año de kindergarten en persona, ni siquiera se metió en el aula de primera clase, lo cual era completamente online. Estos niños robados de aprendizaje en persona merecen la oportunidad de completar sus años de secundaria en un entorno familiar en el campus de Gant, especialmente su último grado de quinto grado antes de la escuela secundaria. No desplazemoslos de nuevo, merecen mejor. Gant depende gravemente de la financiación del PTA para actividades vitales como reuniones, educación de base, asambleas y eventos. Dividir el campus arruinaría los recursos, jeopardizando programas como el juego de la escuela, show talent, Run Run Apex y más. Sin un campus unificado, foster un cohesivo comunidad de Gant sería desafiante, si no inattentivo. Les exijo que reconsideren este plan. En cambio, colaboremos en una solución que priorice nuestra salud y bienestar de nuestros hijos y la continuidad educativa. Nosotros exploramos alternativas que mantengan la escuela juntos y cerca del vecindario de Gant. Gracias por su tiempo y consideración.
Gracias. Siguiente, tenemos a Brian. Brian.
Buenas tardes, miembros de la Junta de la Mesa, y gracias por la oportunidad de hablar. Y gracias por todo el trabajo duro que hacen. Mi nombre es Brian Coney y soy padre de un primer grado y un segundo grado en Longfellow Elementary. Estoy aquí hoy para pedir su ayuda en la resolución de un problema que amenaza el bienestar de nuestra comunidad. He escrito a algunos de ustedes sobre esto, así que espero que no vaya a ser una sorpresa. Recientemente aprendimos que nuestra escuela de casi 1,000 niños está perdiendo su financiamiento de título uno. Y la consecuencia principal de esto es que estamos perdiendo a nuestro asistente de tiempo de la principal, Alison Rayburn, nuestro maestro de tiempo completo, Teresa Wolvet, nuestro coordinador de programación SEL, Carol Allwood, y nuestro consejero de tiempo completo, Grace Reyes, están siendo reducidos al 50%. Tres y medio posiciones están perdidas. Para una escuela de 1,000 niños, perder estas personas es trágico. Y especialmente, especialmente más así para los casi 400 niños socioeconómicos desfavorecidos en nuestra escuela, lo cual, para contexto, es mayor que el total de adquisición de algunas escuelas que retendrán un asistente de principal o consejero el año siguiente. Para muchos de estos 400 niños, nuestro consejero, Miss Reyes, es un espacio seguro que tendrán incluso menos acceso. Nuestros maestros ya están espalda, y al eliminar estas posiciones, serán espalda aún más espalda con menos tiempo para la instrucción productiva, trabajo de grupo pequeño, preparación de pruebas y demás. Eliminar estructuras de apoyo críticas crea un entorno de aprendizaje insano y da peligro al objetivo de cerrar el rango de logros. Durante una reciente reunión de presupuestos de la comunidad, la principal Plattis fue preguntada por qué estas posiciones fueron eliminadas o reducidas, y la respuesta fue que era principalmente basada en presupuestos. También durante esa reunión, el Sr. Jespersson comentó que el declive de la adquisición del distrito está causando desafíos en el financiamiento. Bueno, Longfellow's adquisición no está bajando. Definitivamente no disminuye, y estamos siendo castigados. Adicionalmente, el Consejo de la Escuela de Situación recientemente analizó a las familias y maestros y la prioridad número uno para ambos grupos fue las intervenciones de estudiantes y la prioridad más baja fue el desarrollo profesional. Para mí, esto indica que podría haber algunas creativas oportunidades de resolución de problemas de presupuesto aquí. Por ejemplo, cambiar el presupuesto de los costos de desarrollo profesional y hacia salarios de personal, como nuestro consejero, Miss Reyes. Le pido que vivan los valores centrales del distrito y colaboren con nuestra escuela para encontrar el financiamiento necesario para reinstalar estas posiciones que 1,000 de nuestros hijos necesitan desesperadamente para prosperar. Gracias.
Gracias. Siguiente, tenemos a Addison.
Buenas tardes, President Craighead y colegas miembros de la Junta de la Mesa. Soy Addison Broad.
Y soy Anya Jenkins.
Somos ambos de tercero grado en la escuela secundaria Minnegan.
Estamos aquí hoy para compartir nuestras expresiones, para quedarme aquí en Minnegan.
Estoy principalmente preocupada por el impacto que esto tendrá en nuestro aprendizaje.
En adición, las actividades que tendremos como viajes de campo, violoneros, coro, Apex y Run Club y mucho más cosas.
Las cambios que haría es que la gente tendría que despertar más temprano y ir a Minnegan, subir en un autobús y conducir a Lakewood sin sus padres.
Sería muy difícil para los padres que tienen un tercer grado y más y un segundo grado y menos.
Tanto tenemos hermanas más jóvenes que están en primer grado y secundaria. El nombre de mi hermana es Reagan.
Y el nombre de mi hermana es Aria.
Gracias por tomarse el tiempo para escuchar nuestras preocupaciones. Espero que hayan cambiado cosas para mantenernos en Minnegan. Por favor, manténganos en Minnegan.
Gracias. Siguiente, tenemos a Katie.
Mueve esto un poco. Buenas tardes, todos. Mi nombre es Katie Bowser y soy madre de este tercer grado en Minnegan. Tenemos una gran contingencia aquí y creemos que deberían revisar su política y tomar medidas para permitir que todos hablen y extender el tiempo de comentario público para más de 30 minutos. El 11/2 de anoche, su personal informó nosotros por primera vez que nuestros terceros a quinto grados serían busificados a un campus casi cinco millas lejos todo el año próximo para las renovaciones de la escuela secundaria HVAC. El personal parecía realmente sorprendido que el auditorio lleno de padres estaba molesto con este plan. Planearon enviar a nuestros hijos en autobuses a las 7:00 o 7:15 cada día, lo que hace casi imposible que se despeguen otros niños en Gant o en las escuelas cercanas. Los niños tendrían una hora o más atascada cada día de la escuela. Pedimos que los portables sean llevados a Gant, como otras escuelas han hecho con sus proyectos de construcción. El personal nos aseguró en esa reunión que tomarían nuestras preguntas y preocupaciones y responderían a nosotros al final de 2023, lo que ya era un largo tiempo para esperar cuando habíamos recibido esta noticia. No respondieron. Seguí en mayo y fui segura de que escucharíamos algo al final del mes. Todavía no lo hicimos. También hice una solicitud de registros detallada el 13 de noviembre para intentar obtener información sobre los costos de uso de otros schools de portables, los costos de mover a la mitad de nuestro personal en el campus a otro lugar, como costos de personal y de autobuses, y información sobre la decisión que se tomó, como qué se consideró y quién tomó la decisión. Una puerta de días después de mi solicitud, me dijo que tenía que esperar hasta el final de enero antes de que nada se proporcionara. Lo empujé, sabiendo que como abogada de la agencia pública, eso no era razonable bajo el Act de Recursos Públicos. Y mi consejo me dijo que el distrito estaba estrechado, lo cual no es una excepción razonable, y que mi solicitud era tan amplio y volumenoso que tomaría tanto tiempo recoger los registros. También no estaría de acuerdo con una publicación, lo que debería haber hecho. El 19 de enero, el personal envió mi respuesta final, un montón de 8 páginas de registros que reclamaban no registros para muchas categorías e impropiamente alineando mi solicitud para muchos otros. Reclamaban no exenciones por no publicar documentos. Por ejemplo, reclamaron que no había registros relacionados con la decisión de desplazar a estos niños versus traer portables. Dijeron que no había registros relacionados con posibles penalties si fondos de crédito no se usan correctamente. Como saben, deben haber registros sobre esos asuntos. Estamos siendo ignorados y arrastrados aquí y no toleraremos eso. Hemos venido porque sabemos que no es así como se quiere que se traten sus constituyentes. Pedimos que los portables sean llevados a nuestro campus, como lo hacen otras para que toda la escuela pueda quedarse juntos durante la construcción y quedarse en su hogar. No queremos que ninguno de nuestros hijos tome un autobús todos los días y agregue tanto tiempo a su día y los peligros de un viaje de autobús. Estos son los mismos niños que comenzaron en la escuela secundaria durante COVID, no merecen esto. Hagan la decisión correcta fiscal y educacional para estos niños y familias.
Lo siento, pero su tiempo está acabado. Siguiente, tenemos a Genevieve.
Hola, mi nombre es Genevieve Bowser y soy tercera clase de Gant Elementary. Estoy aquí para discutir los planes de autobuses. No quiero tomar un autobús en ningún otro lugar, quiero quedarme en Gant. Una razón es que no quiero levantarme más temprano para tomar un autobús a las 7:15 y no llegar a casa hasta casi 3:00 cada día. Otra razón es que los niños mayores no pueden estar compartiendo amigos de lectura con los niños más jóvenes debido a la mudanza. Y algunos de mis amigos tienen hermanos pequeños que todavía estarían en Gant. Y recuerdo cuánto amaba tener a mi hermana mayor en la escuela conmigo. No es solo difícil para nosotros, es difícil para los padres y maestros también. ¿Por qué no podemos que los portables vayan a nuestra escuela en lugar? Otras escuelas como LOL y Stanford obtuvieron portables para su construcción. Además, tenemos una patición con más de 300 firmas que apoyan no autobusarnos pero nos permitirnos quedarnos en Gant. Así que puedo estar aquí y decir que hay muchas personas que nos apoyan y que tenemos un grupo más grande que solo es lo que hay hoy. No quiero ser búsquedado. Otros niños no quieren ser búsquedados. Los padres no quieren que esto suceda. Por favor, manténganse en Gant. Por favor, no autobuse la mitad de la escuela y ciertamente no autobuse la escuela entera. Por favor, tomen lo que he dicho en consideración. Gracias.
Buen hecho, Genevieve, buen hecho. Siguiente, tenemos a Marcia. No. Marcia? Merchant es el nombre último. Estoy teniendo dificultades en distinguir el primer nombre.
Buenas tardes, miembros de la Junta de la Mesa. Mi nombre es Manisha Merchant y soy madre de un tercer grado en la escuela secundaria Minnegan. ¿Qué es lo mejor de la interés del niño? Ese es el pregunta que todos deberíamos preguntar a nosotros mismos. Mi hijo está en la escuela secundaria. Muchos de estos niños, cuando comenzaron la secundaria, incluyendo a mi hijo, apenas han estado en este campus durante tres años. En realidad, aprendieron a Zoom antes de que aprendieran a leer y escribir. Reconocen máscaras de cara y cómo swabar para pruebas de COVID antes de poder ni siquiera reunirse con sus compañeros de clase en persona y hacer nuevos amigos. Entendemos, entonces no había opciones. Nadie puede argumentar la importancia de mantener un entorno de aprendizaje estable para estos niños. El impacto académico y emocional en los niños si son autobusados a diferentes campus no debe ser olvidado. Estás rompiendo su familia escolar, no a mencionar las familias reales que ya han oído hablar donde hay más de un niño en la escuela y solo uno de ellos está siendo sujeto a autobusar. Un nuevo campus, una nueva rutina, un nuevo jardín, nuevos supervisores. ¿Dónde está la estabilidad aquí? Entendemos que no había opciones cuando algunos de estos niños comenzaron el kindergarten, como mi hijo. La diferencia es que en realidad tenemos opciones ahora. Otras escuelas, como han oído, han sido exitosas para educar a los niños mientras siguen en el mismo campus, en bungalows y alquilando renovaciones que estamos de acuerdo que son criticalmente importantes. Estas opciones pueden no ser la más coste efectiva, pero son opciones y mi comprensión es que tenemos el financiamiento. Queremos que consideren estas alternativas. No queremos que seamos obligados a que tengamos una voz pero luego que seamos obligados a que se tome una decisión antes de que ni siquiera tuviéramos la oportunidad de hablar. El valor de una experiencia educativa sinlenta para apoyar el desarrollo general en términos de estos niños es lo que es en su mejor interés. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jason.
Hi, good evening, President Craighead and fellow board members. Superintendent Baker, my name is Jason Brode. I'm also here tonight with the Minnigant cohort. My daughter Addison is a third grader, and we have a kindergartner as well at Minnigant. Addison was one of the two girls that was up here and spoke, so I'll be brief. I'm not going to repeat many of the points I already made. Rest assured, I won't take my entire three minutes. But I feel, you know, compelled to come up here and just address the board. I personally was the individual the night of November 2nd that raised my hand at the very end. A lot of great questions were asked. The room was packed. We didn't get many answers that night, understandably so. You know, there was somebody taking very detailed notes in the corner of the room. My only request, it wasn't a question, it was just requests, is if staff could commit to the parents in the room to put out a Q&amp;A, FAQ, whatever, some form of a response to the questions that were taken down. And, you know, I said, you know, four to six weeks might sound reasonable, but how about the end of the calendar year? And David, who is, I think, over in the overflow room, committed to that. So we left that room feeling good, optimistic. We didn't want all of that to be lost while December 31st came and went. And here we are in early February. We don't have a response. We do feel that this decision was kind of predetermined and that the November 2nd meeting wasn't very genuine. You know, as kind of a side note, it's given me a little bit of optimism, but based on the fact that December 31st FAQ didn't come out. I don't know if I'm going to count on this, but David did say, and maybe somebody here on staff or, you know, could confirm or not, that the decision isn't final, that all options are still on the table and being evaluated. So that's given me a little bit of hope, and maybe some of those in attendance tonight don't know that because this discussion happened about a half hour, 45 minutes ago. So if somebody has an idea, if those are involved in those discussions and can confirm that the Minnigant temporary housing plan to relocate to Monroe isn't the final decision yet, I'd love to hear that.
Well, with items not listed on the agenda, we cannot discuss that.
Okay, okay. I understand that. So you can't, you're not taking action, but you can't, you're not even able to confirm that or not confirm that?
That's, yeah. That would be a violation of the Brown Act because it's not on the agenda.
Okay, okay. So anyway, for what it's worth, that's what I was told just this evening again, that the decision's not final, so hopefully that's the case. And anyway, I did take my three minutes, but I hope that you, it's apparent that we're coming tonight approaching this matter with diplomacy intact, and, you know, we want to collaborate with everybody here, so just for what's right for the kids. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amy. Amy?
Good evening, members of the board, parents, families, kids. I just want to say how amazing you are. Thank you for that. My family chose the home that we live in because of its proximity to Gant, valuing not just the educational excellence, but also the sense of community that we foster in the neighborhood. Today, I stand before you to voice the significant concerns that I have regarding the decision to temporarily bus our kids to a school that is four and a half miles away, a decision that deeply affects my children's routine, their well-being, and by extension, our families. The relocation necessitated by air conditioning upgrades perplexes me and concerns me because the chosen alternative lacks the very upgrades that we're awaiting at Gant. We're forcing our children to depart at 7:15 a.m. This adjustment isn't trivial. It represents a significant upheaval for many families, myself included. I'm going to have to hire someone to help me with my morning routine if this happens because I don't have the bandwidth to be able to do those two drop-offs. And to be really honest with you, I don't feel comfortable putting my child on a bus. More than a logistical inconvenience, the decision impacts children's mental health and well-being. The additional stress that this places on families is going to require us to adjust our schedules drastically. My family faces a real possibility now of spending more money to be able to successfully transition into this new way of life. And moreover, the essence of my concern extends beyond convenience. It touches on the fundamental right of our children to a stable and conducive learning environment. This proposal to relocate the children rather than utilizing on-campus solutions such as adding bungalows seems to overlook less disruptive alternatives. I'm deeply troubled by the apparent lack of parental involvement in this decision. We are a community. That is why I live Long Beach. That's why I live in Long Beach. And the way that this happened really concerns me because it takes away that feeling of community. It feels like your decision was made without taking parents into the consideration. In closing, I want to appeal your sense of community, appeal to your sense of community and responsibility. Our children's best interest must guide your decision, and in this spirit, I invite an open, transparent communication and a renewed commitment to involving parents in such critical decisions. Thank you for your time and consideration. I hope that we can work together towards a solution that upholds the values and standards of Minnigant.
Thank you. And lastly, we have Daniel. Daniel?
Thank you for giving me the time to speak here, and thank to all the Minnigant parents that are here, and those of you guys advocating for safe passages. As a Long Beach resident, I grew up here. I went to Long Beach, Jordan. Mr. Rockenbach was my counselor in high school. Honestly, I'm saddened to see that people are still advocating for safe passages and just safe places for kids to be at, and that's not why I'm here. I'm just saddened that that's an item. Okay, so good luck, okay? And then for the Minnigant, for us at Minnigant, we have a lot of questions, and we would like some answers, and it's disappointing that as public servants, as people that, some of you are elected, some of you were appointed, some of you applied, haven't given us the answers to the Q&amp;A that we requested back on November 2nd, correct? So I think that's disappointing as public servants, and I think you guys should put that information out as soon as possible because we are going to be directly impacted by my third grader that's now going to have to go to Monroe and get up an hour earlier and get home an hour later, which is going to affect her softball, all of her daily routine. So I understand that the upgrades need to happen to the school, and I'm for them. I'm for the upgrades. You know, I don't recall if I had AC or not in grade school, but it's a good luxury to have. And I think that involving the parents, asking those questions, putting a survey out, having more than the November 2nd meeting that we still haven't got answers from is something you guys at least owe us as residents, as the parents of the students, and as concerned citizens. So I thank you for your time, and I just want to, you know, stress that we would like more information before a decision is made, and hopefully a decision hasn't been made, but we don't know that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. The district is aware of parent concerns at both Longfellow and Gant Elementary Schools. As these are not board policy issues, district staff will continue to work with the school communities involved. Next on the agenda, we have reports on superintendent advisory groups. We'll start with the business, budget, and policy development. Dr. Benitez.
Thank you, President Craighead. So just a couple of items to report out on for the Business Budget and Policy Development Advisory Group. So we had a really important opportunity to dialogue with students from one of our high schools this afternoon. President Craighead and I met with our business department team and discussed two potential policy items that would come as information items to us first at an upcoming board meeting. The first, which was based on an actual student project that was looking at policies. The students chose to look at our discipline policy. And so we had a really good, productive, insightful conversation around how students think about school discipline and school safety. And so I'm looking forward to having an engaging conversation once that comes to us as an information item. But basically, the spirit of the possible revisions to our current discipline policy came in two areas. One is that students expressed that there wasn't consistency in how school discipline, existing policies based on either State Department of Ed Code or our own internal mechanisms, that the consistency was lacking both across schools, but also within schools for particular student subgroups. The second was around having more restorative, proactive measures and not punitive measures around discipline. So good conversation. I don't know if you want to add anything, President Craighead, but we look forward to having a future conversation to explore revisions to updating our discipline policy.
Well, I agree with you. It was a very unique experience. I believe it was the first time that we had included students in a policy review. And I think going forward, I'd like to see that happen a lot more often. The students that came to meet with us were well-prepared. They had done their homework. They gave us very valuable input on our discipline policy. And I appreciated how they wanted the focus to be on something positive for discipline, about how we can turn that into opportunity and not so much a punitive action. And they helped us keep that focus, and yeah, I agree. It was a wonderful addition to our policy review, and I look forward to more of that in the future.
Thank you, President Craighead. The second item that we had a good conversation around was around our suspension policy and really wanting to address some of the disparities, both in our suspension rates, but also, again, amongst particular subgroups. So our ultimate goal is, of course, to keep students on our campuses, to keep students engaged. And so we'll be having a future conversation as an information item on how to best do that. One, kind of something that came up, and I think it's important as folks consider these policies and as we have conversations about policies, is the difference between policy and implementation, all right, and operationalizing policy. So the policy are those things that we want to concretely uphold, based on our values, based on our board goals, our guardrails. How we implement those occurs in such a layered fashion, either through ARs, academic regulations, I'm sorry, and/or best practices in our district. So part of our conversation with the students was in differentiating, okay, what are policies for, and then differentiating that for how do we operationalize and make sure we uphold those policies? Oftentimes, we have conversations, whether it be with parent groups, student groups, our own educators, around differentiating between practices, procedures, systems that we have to have in place in order to uphold policies. And so sometimes we measure policies by our inability to actually implement them or implement them with the outcomes that we expected. So good conversation with our suspension proposed policy, and I'm looking forward to engaging in those conversations with my fellow board members.
Thank you. One more?
One more. We do have policies in the consent calendar that we have spoken to at previous meetings for our consideration as well.
Great, yes. And I appreciated how the students want us to focus on that equity across the district and also not just across the district, but across all demographics, that we are treating all of our students and looking at them with the same lens. Next, we have instruction and student learning. Ms. Lopez?
Thank you. We just, I'll be brief. We just discussed the nondiscrimination harassment policy and the school's accountability report cards. There is new language to the nondiscrimination harassment policy, and that states, "Because unlawful discrimination may occur when disciplining students, including suspension and expulsion, the superintendent or designee shall ensure that staff enforce discipline rules fairly, consistently, and in a nondiscriminatory manner as specified in Board Policy and Administrative Regulations 5144." So to ensure that administrators understand the suspension and expulsion guidelines, they are receiving training every year before the start of the school year. And also, for the parents, the school accountability report cards, excuse me, are now available on the district website and on your child's school's website. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Miller with the workforce development.
Yeah, so I'll be brief. I have three things I wanted to talk about today. One is, first off, we got a big day tomorrow. It is teacher recruitment night. So our teacher recruitment night will be held tomorrow, Thursday, February 8th, from 5:00 to 6:30 at Browning High School. We're looking to fill needs like special education, dual immersion, math, science, our Avalon Campus, and CTE. So as of today, we've had over 178 people RSVP. So that is really, really exciting news. Next, I wanted to give you all an update on our administrative services credentialing program. So as you all have heard, as I reported last time at our board report, is that the LUSD is in the process of submitting our application to the California Teaching Commission for our own clear administrative services credentialing program. This will allow us to be our own credentialing agency for 2425 and to help our administrators clear their credential during the first two years in the job. All aspects of the job, I mean, all aspects of the program will be job embedded. So really, really cool opportunity for our teachers, and I mean, I'm sorry, our employees with the district. Last, but definitely not least, an in-house Black History celebration. So our HRS team is sponsoring a Black History celebration, and the theme is honoring the past, celebrating the present, and inspiring the future. This will happen this Fri, I mean, not this Friday, but on Friday, February 23rd, from 12 to 1, here in the administrative building in Room 143. This year, we will have Cabrillo students who will be taking part in the ceremony. So this is obviously a really cool opportunity for our admin team, and so I wanted to thank all parties involved for putting this together, as I know it takes a lot of work to make that happen. That's my report.
Thank you. And next, we have student outcome-focused governance. Mr. Otto?
Yeah, thanks very much. The, excuse me, student-focused, student government, student outcomes-focused governance group met last week to talk about the monitoring calendar and setup. We adopted it at our meeting in January, our second meeting in January, and we are moving ahead now. We have been discussing in February, we intend to discuss, we're discussing now Goal One and Goal Two. Goal One has to do with reading proficiency. The goal is that the percentage of grade-three students who meet or exceed grade-level standards on the state English Language Arts SBAAC assessment will grow from 48% in June 2023 to 70% by June 2028. And the second goal, which we are also working on this month, is, concerns reading acceleration. And that goal is that the percentage of students in grades four through eight scoring at the not-meet achievement level in the prior year, who meet the scale score target not-met achievement level in the prior year, who meet the scale score target growth for the State SBAC English Language Arts Assessment, will increase from 28% in June 2023 to 60% in June 2028. Now, these goals, and there are four, there are three goals, or four goals, I should say, but those are the ones we're focusing on right now. And they will have interim goals moving up to those 2028 dates that are being worked out right now. It's a very complicated and deep process to move entire grade levels forward, especially when people start at different times and in different locations. But we're confident that we're making progress on this. We are meeting on a, before every board meeting, to put this plan together and the implementation, and I hope at the next meeting to have more information about Goals Three and Four. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Otto.
President Craighead, just wanted to build on Mr. Otto's comments. So, we will have that presentation at the February 20th workshop. If anyone's interested, this will be our first sort of round of data as they relate to the board goals that Mr. Otto just shared. Just to build on that a little bit further, and I think I'm inviting our community members to tune in. So, we'll hear about what assessments we're using to measure progress toward our goals. We'll hear about what these assessments tell us. And then we'll also hear about how we understand these assessments in relation to goals. So, I think if anyone's missed our conversations around board goals and guardrails up to this point, this would be a great meeting to tune into. If you're a parent, student, caregiver, or family member, it will also give you a sense of the assessments that you hear your students talking about throughout the year. So, we're looking forward to that discussion, Mr. Otto.
And I would just add, it's not just a regular board meeting, which means that there'll be plenty of opportunity to talk about this, and it's a different form of governance. This is a student outcomes-focused governance program that we're moving towards, and we need this extra time to work these things out in public.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the consent calendar, and I'll just remind everybody that we moved Item 14.9 out of this Consent Calendar A and moved it into Consent Calendar B. So, we'll be voting on 14.1 to 14.8. And I need a motion.
Second.
Do we have discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I first just wanted to talk about Item on the Consent Calendar, up for approval on 14.7, which is the Safe Passage Agreement for Central CHA. And I wanted to just really, yes, that's Item Number Four. Yeah, sorry about that. I wanted to reiterate the importance of safe passage. When we send our young men and young women to school on a daily basis, obviously, we are doing this in support of their academic growth. But as parents, when we're sending our kids off, we are sending you arguably the most valuable thing that we oversee. And so to make sure that they have a comfortable place to be with air conditioning and loving teachers, but also safe passage coming back and forth from school, I think that that is very, very integral to the success of not just the Long Beach Unified School District, but our entire city. And so I was very, very pleased to see that the district prioritized the safe passage of our students on the West Side of Long Beach. As we've heard from the comments stated today, we've had a number of unfortunate incidents happen when it comes to our kids having safe passage back and forth. But with that, the part that I was most pleased with is, and I want to make sure that I reiterate this, when it comes to safe passage, it has to be more than a vest. It has to be more than people standing there just a part of crossguards. These are people who are part of the community. These are people that represent these neighborhoods, that have relationships with these kids, that have relationships with the folks in these neighborhoods, that understand the importance of wanting our families to be able to come back and forth safely along the Santa Fe Corridor. Unfortunately, as Jessica spoke to earlier, we are well aware of all of the unfortunate incidents that have happened right there on Santa Fe for heck, as long as I can remember. And so to this, I am glad that the Long Beach Unified School District and our leadership in particular is taking a high priority in making sure that our kids have safe passage, but more importantly, having people that are connected to our neighborhoods as community outreach representatives. So, I'm very, very pleased to support this initiative here. There's also two other pieces on 14.7 that I'm happy to support. Items Number 11 and Item Number 12 with Long Beach Blast. When I came onboard to the district, I spoke very heavily of my time within the Long Beach Unified School District in regards to support to great teachers, in regards to support to great school counselors. But I would have been remiss if I didn't acknowledge the support of great mentorship that I had. And so to see the district also in support of those outside agencies, those nonprofits, those organizations that are in support of the overall, well, we're taking a holistic approach towards supporting our students. I'm very, very pleased to see that we are supporting organizations like Long Beach Blast, which are focusing on both the support of our students on campus, but also the mentorship for our kids off campus. So, these are really, really great initiatives that I'm happy to see, and I wanted to thank you all for putting a higher emphasis on these items.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez.
Yes. On Item Number Four with the agreement with Central CHA, I'm wondering, and I just, I do have a question. Are we looking to expand this program? Because I think it's a great program, that we ought to be looking to expand across the district and for a long term. So, I do have that question. So, that's my first question. I do have a few others. Go ahead.
Yes, please.
Thank you for the question, and I don't want to presume your question, Dr. Benitez, but maybe I can touch on a couple of things at the same time.
I was gonna say, just go ahead, Dr. Brown.
Okay. So, thank you for the opportunity, certainly coming to a place of bringing this contract forward. Thank you to those of you who are here this evening from Central CHA and also from the Washington neighborhood. Thank you for all the ways that you have been working in service to our community. So, this contract is not just a contract, it's a commitment, and the commitment is to, through the voices of community and really listening to the community need, which also I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the work that Safer LBUSD has done through Dr. Kim Tabari, through Chris Covington, and really a number of community organizations that have come together to talk about safety. And one of the things that we know is that safety grows through relationship. And so you've heard already from the speakers this evening that there are a number of groups that are providing support within the neighborhood. You've heard Habitat for Humanity mentioned, and there are many others. If I start mentioning, I may forget someone, so I'm just gonna say there are many others. We have been on a path to finding out what could be supportive specifically in the West Side area of Long Beach, and we've gone all over and round again, and sometimes when you do that, you get led right back to your own backyard, where Mr. Miller, as you said, really recognizing the need to know the community, be a part of the community, and be in relationship with the community that is being served. So, with that, I would say, in response to your question, Ms. Lopez, about expansion, the reason that the contract is for the remainder of this fiscal year is because we really want to learn our way into what is supportive and how we can be most supportive. And then from that, we look to grow into other spaces, to include community partnership, to include partnership with the city, and other organizations, some of whom we may not even know right now. And so our approach is not that one thing is supportive, but that many things in connection with community are supportive of what we need to bring our students to school safely and home from school safely. I hope I addressed your question, and did I, Dr. Benitez?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Brown. So, you touched on almost everything, and one of the things that you just shared, we're having, I think, from my perspective, multiple conversations with the city as well, and oftentimes, you know, because we're both big institutions, some of that communication may not be getting across to our community partners. So, I was wondering if you could just touch a little bit more on sort of what conversations our district as an institution is having with our city as a partner in relation to some of the things that you just shared.
I appreciate that. We've been in a couple of years' worth of conversation with the city and really talking about what the possibilities may be. And through that collaboration, we've been able to bring together a number of ideas. We continue to have conversations, and I want to acknowledge the group that was here from the Long Beach Violence Intervention Prevention Coordination effort, because the city is a part of that, and that is actually a wonderful example of community joining around two large institutions like the city and our school district to support bringing people together. And so I'm really grateful for that leadership that has brought us there. I think that that space is allowing the school district and the city to come together, even in some new ways, in conjunction with the organizations that are there. And the thing that we know is that we don't have to compete with one another. We all want the same thing. There's enough need to go around, and so our efforts join together to determine what works in different community spaces is really the focus that we have. Thank you.
And this, they have been on this issue for years now, and in fact, arranged for the same kind of safe passages program several years ago, arranged by them also at Cabrillo and Stevens. And it was successful, but it was expensive, and it was hard to do. And this is the first time that the district is partnering with Central CHA to achieve this. This is a $235,000 grant. Central CHA, in its efforts to address the violence issue in Long Beach, received a $1.5 million grant from the United States Government, from the Department of Justice, and has been working on this for a long time. And the core, like Dr. Brown said, of this is working with the neighborhoods, working with the neighborhood groups and the people in the neighborhoods to make safe passage more than, as somebody said earlier, just somebody in a vest, but getting people involved that say that this is not going to happen anymore. And we're very excited about this. And my understanding is that if this is as successful as we hope that it will be, as we want it to be, what will happen is it can be expanded, but we want to get the data first. And so that's why we have a one-year grant. But kudos to Central CHA and all the people that have been involved in this. Ms. Craighead and I have been attending these Community Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative meetings for the better part of a year now, and the involvement of the community in this is strong and needs to be celebrated.
Yes, I actually have a couple more questions, and these are going to be for facilities. Items Number 26 and 27. There's two contracts, one for $200,000 and one for $550,000 to provide site-serving services as needed. And if someone can just elaborate on these contracts?
Yes, I see Mr. Miranda approaching the lectern.
So, both of these particular agreements are new master agreements, as we call them. So, they're really on-call type services, only to be utilized if and when we need those particular services from these particular entities. So, in the past, as I brought forward our pre-qualified pools of consultants for several of these professional services, I mentioned we still have them compete at a second level for particular project awards. This gives us that capacity to be able to award a particular task order to each of these service providers if and when they land one of those particular projects. So, it's an authority to be able to allow us that flexibility to go fast, award project-based professional services to each of those respective providers.
Thank you. And while you're there, would you please explain Item Number 34, the lease-back construction services for HVAC and portables, which we had parents here today, and the need to increase the contract to $37,45,683? Is that because perhaps portables are coming to these schools?
Large amendment, so I'm definitely happy to speak to it. I'm glad you called that one out. So, this particular agreement started way back in 2018, right? So, in the fall of 2018, we first contracted with Erickson Hall Construction to be our lease-back provider, specifically at that point in time to help us with what we call pre-construction services. Those pre-construction services really help us out in terms of the collaborative spirit with the project architect and the engineers, and just helping us identify construction-related items and issues early in the project. I say early in the project because at that point in 2018, we're kind of at that infancy, early stage of design, right? At that early stage of design, we come forward with a project estimate, which is somewhat of an educated guess at that point in time. So, as we fast forward now, five-plus years forward, we have a refined scope of work, right? So, we've definitely developed and further refined the scope of work. We've had cost escalation for five-plus years, and some of those years were just massive peaks in terms of what we saw with material cost increases and labor cost increases in the market. We also now have updated subcontractor bids. So, we're far from the guesstimate stage. These are firm costs from subcontractors across every specific trade. So, refined scope of work, cost increases, really getting us to where we are here with this large amendment. But for us, we take that, we compare it to comparable projects. So, for us at the middle school level, we would compare this to a Hughes project that was completed not too long ago, and those numbers are on par with where we should be for that type of scope.
Okay. And one last question. Item 42, the bid for the amount of $1,450,000 for the drinking fountains in 15 school sites. Where can the public access the list of the schools that will be benefiting from this?
Yeah, so I would direct our public to our LB School Bonds website, LBSchoolBonds.net specifically. We have a specific tab labeled, it gives folks the ability to search by school. So, by and large, folks are interested in what's going on at their particular campus. So, I was to search via that toolbar for Adams or Lincoln or so on and so forth. It would actually paint a picture of not just where we are with respect to this project, but several projects at their campus, whether it be Esther-funded work or bond-related work as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. Well, I also wanted to express support for safe passages, and as Mr. Otto said, we've been serving on this committee. It's been a real pleasure and source of pride to see the commitment from the community. And I would just like to add that it's more than wearing a vest. These volunteers are trained, and so it's not just a haphazard, you know, volunteer showing up. It's people being trained in conflict resolution and communication skills and how to appropriately interact with students and parents and community members. And I don't want to duplicate the things expressed here by everybody else, because everybody else did such a wonderful job. But I would like to thank everybody for their support this evening, and even though not everybody was able to complete their prepared speech, I want to say that an emotional testimony sometimes is more impactful than words. So, I just want to mention, we're listening, but because we're listening with our hearts, you were speaking volumes. Just know that. So, with that, I think we'll go ahead and try and vote on this. So, Consent Calendar, and I'm going to ask our board secretary to take a roll call vote. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I thought we were gonna go back to, you went with Board Member Lopez, and I thought you were gonna come back for any other discussion from consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought everybody had a chance.
No, I just followed, I got a chance to follow up with Dr. Brown on that one item. So, I have two.
Oh, you have two. I'm sorry.
Two questions. Not, won't be long. One of them, I actually want to share, I had checked in with Ms. Takahashi on whether for future Consent Calendar items, particularly with either agreements or new contracts or change orders. change orders, if we could get, I find these very helpful, Ms. Takahashi, unaccompanied memo. So for instance, the, the item number 34 that Mr. Miranda just provided some context for, I think it would be helpful for us if it's a, you know, a big change in scope or a big change in amount, in this case, $16 million, it would be good for our community to know, hey, you know, otherwise I feel like we get into sort of a never-ending, "Come on up again, David, come on up again, David." So I think that would be helpful, and Ms. Takahashi said that certainly the team could put something like that together. So that being said, I, I will not expand more on that item because I fully expect that we'll get a company in the materials that can provide some context. I was thinking of items 40 to 43, Mr. Miranda, on the shade structures, right? From time to time, we'll get updates on drinking fountains, shade structures, so things like that, as they align with our, what do we call these, Mr. Miranda, our master, facilities' master plan, right? So we don't, you know, we don't lose sight that these are all anchored in a policy that we've already passed as a board. So thank you for the updates. The second question I had was more around instruction report, Dr. Baker. So in, in here, we have, let me get the number right, 14.4, our accountability report cards. And from time to time, we do get questions on, okay, what are these used for? Both at our district level, how do schools, you know, use the accountability report cards? And then, if you could, Dr. Baker, what, how do parents make sense of these accountability report cards? Because a lot of time, an effort is put into putting these up. They're on the website, as Ms. Lopez already said. So, you know, big picture, what do we do with these? But also, how do we make sense at a school level, Dr. Baker?
Yeah, and they're required posting by the state of California that includes, as the item says, includes the requirement of demographic data, school safety and climate, academic, school completion rates, class size, teacher and staff information, curriculum instruction descriptions, fiscal and expenditure data. And so it's an opportunity for a parent or any member of the community to just have, have a look at the totality of an individual school. In fairly common language, I'll say, and broken down by those categories, they can be used by a school site council, by a community group, working with the school on, on an aspect of improvement or affirmation at the school. It just provides pretty much an overview or a summary of many different aspects at the school level. They're updated annually so that when data changes from demographics to staffing, the community has access to the updated information. And it, they often are used in combination with working on the single plan for student achievement. And so again, just a way for the, the school to have, or for the community to have access to that kind of data. Yeah, they're all posted. This year, I know George Tsai, can thank George Tsai and James Suarez, who really worked behind the scenes to make sure that all of the required data was clean and updated for families to access them. Is that enough? Do you want more information?
That was all from me.
Thank you. Then I think we're ready for that vote. So Letitia?
Thank you. Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And student member Aguilar preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you, that passes 5-0.
Thank you, everyone. Now we will move to consent calendar B. That will be 15.1, approval of finance report B, and also 15.2, adoption of resolution 020724-A.
Yes. Madam Craighead, if you don't mind, out of abundance of caution, I would recuse myself from consent calendar B as I have a potential conflict of interest under California state laws.
Thank you. We need a motion.
Move to approve.
And I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Thank you. Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller, you're recusing. And student member Aguilar preferential vote?
Aye.
Okay, that passes 4-0 with one abstention.
Thank you. Next, we move to new business. Item 16.1, approval of memorandum of understanding tal-
President Craighead?
I'm sorry, what?
Okay, sorry, I was just checking to make sure that we got both items in consent B.
Oh, okay. Great. And so item 16.1.
Did we move 15, 14, or something to 15.2?
Yes, because it was under consent calendar B, so it was, they were together.
We didn't make it a separate, separate item?
Well, it's a consent calendar, so it was together.
When we, when we approved the agenda, we made that change at that time where we took 14.9, we took 14.9 and made it into 15.2. That was what the agenda was moved and seconded and voted on.
So we didn't move it to 15.1, we moved it to 15.2, made it a separate item?
Correct, and it was voted on just now.
As long as we voted on it, that's fine.
Yes. Okay, so we're ready, we're ready for new business. So item 16.1, do we have a motion?
So move, so move.
Second.
Okay, let's, let's have Letitia do a roll call vote on that one.
Member Mil, uh, Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And student member Aguilar preferential vote?
Aye.
That passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have item 16.2, approval of stipend or course credit, and I should say, course credit for student board member.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Schumpfer, little, little background on this?
Sure. Last year, AB 275 was passed and signed by the governor that allows school boards to pay stipends to their student board members and also provide academic credit. After reviewing costs and different issues we looked at, we made a determination that an appropriate amount of money for a stipend would be $500 a month, and that really includes possible transportation, clothing, and the time it takes to go through and prepare for board meetings and attend board meetings. So that's where we came up with the $500. And we also ask that you approve, beginning in the fall, one academic credit per semester. And the reason we're asking to wait until the fall is that we've got a few bureaucratic issues we have to put together there for the, to get the credit. So that's the, the reason behind it. We'll be one of the first school districts in the state to approve this tonight. Not the first, but one of the first.
Damn. That was going to be my question.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Thank you. Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
That passes 5-0.
Well deserved, well deserved. Okay, and now we are at, wow, report a board member, so Axel, we will start with you.
Good evening, everyone. I am very excited to announce that our first semester has officially ended. And I would just like to highlight the ending of our district high school site nights. Wilson will be second to last because Pauly has rescheduled their site night for February 20th, no, February 13th on Tuesday. And the applications for high school of choice opens on February 20th. And I would also like to highlight the draft grading policy discussion presented by Dr. Camarino and Mr. Cruz to the students of the Raising Student Voices and Participations, whom provided very interesting feedback, and I would, and I look forward to what they have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
I don't have a report today. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez?
You're not going to talk about the Black Student Achievement Initiative Symposium, Mr. Miller?
Of course I was, but I was going to, I'll let you go.
Okay, so I'll start with that. So we had this past weekend, our Black Student Achievement Initiative Symposium at Jordan. I'll just touch on a couple of, of things that I was able to participate in and listen in on, but it was a full day, nine to three, series of conversations, workshops, presentations, discussions. And I'll highlight two. One was the, the afternoon session over lunch with educators around culturally affirming, culturally sustaining, culturally centered, culturally relevant pedagogy strategies and approaches. And we had our keynote focused on African proverbs, riddles, and stories. And so without having to explicitly keep saying, "This is an African proverb, this is an African story," that you could tell the story without bias about, one of the stories that was shared was about animals in the tropical rainforest. And so you don't, you don't necessarily explicitly have to front-load it and say, "This is as a part of Black History Month curriculum." And it's to get out of the mindset that we can trivialize and one-off Afrocentric literature, Afrocentric philosophy, Afrocentric history. And so the idea here is you can embed this in every class, every day, all your practices, right? And then weave through, and these are African proverbs, African riddles, African stories. So a lot of good engagement and interaction. And a big heads up, shout out to Dr. Claybrook from Africana Studies at Cal State Long Beach, who led that afternoon. I also got a chance to check in on our parent workshop, and they had a really cool exercise around connecting words and activities that families and households could do at home. So the idea is you pick, you, you and your student, or the student can pick a series of letters, and then you can ask questions like, "Let's do it, Mr. Miller, pick, pick a letter."
R.
R. So what's something that you dream about, hope for, aspire to be that starts with the letter R?
Ooh, one thing that I aspire for my community that starts with the letter R.
Sorry. One thing that I aspire for, for my community, not necessarily for me, reparations.
Okay. So the idea here would be that you could take a piece of paper, cut out Rs, As, Bs, shape, you could put the R on the piece of paper, and then you could make that into a family art project that's connected to culturally relevant, culturally affirming, culturally centered pedagogy at home, right? So connections about the assets, the gifts, the talents, the knowledge that are in every home, every household, every family, every student, and the implications of that within our classroom settings and our educational endeavors. So it was a lovely time. Thank you to all the community members and students that showed up, but a big thank you to all the team at LBUSD that helped put that together, and to all the work that's involved. You know, you kind of just show up, you're there from a certain time to a certain time, and don't often get a chance to really think through how much effort and intentionality it takes to put a symposium together. Speaking of opportunities to engage with our communities, so the city is undergoing its participatory budgeting process. And thank you, Mr. Dr. Camarino, and if you can thank Marsha Bonilla for us for securing Renaissance High School Renaissance on Thursday afternoon will be the site for idea collection number two, where youth and families can provide input into the youth, the city's youth strategic plan around participatory budgeting. And what better place to do it than at one of our schools, right? So when we talk about investing in youth and participation and lifting up youth voices, whole lot of work went into making sure that our district could provide that space to the collaborators and the organizations that are facilitating those conversations. If you're interested in attending and/or you're interested in sharing ideas, www.investinyouthlb.org. Deadline for idea submission is the 18th of this month. So if you can't make it out to Renaissance, I think it's at 4:30 on Thursday afternoon, you can still participate, www.investinyouthlb.org, to make sure that we prioritize our youth voices through our budgeting in the city. What else? Black Student Achievement, Black History Month, we already talked about that, thank you. Axel, that's my report for tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Otto?
Thanks. So as we all know, this is Black History Month, and every year, I try and come up with something special to recognize things that are, that have gone on in this community. This year, what I did, what I first did was go to the First Fridays last week on, on Atlantic to the annex, and there is, was an incredible show of black history, black activity here in Long Beach, and it was incredibly impressive. There was, the place was full, people were very anxious to, to, to show the things that they were involved in and, and the things that they were proud of. There were all kinds of exhibits. People were there to talk to about things that had been going on. But this year, one of the things that I'm trying to do, we're not positive that it's going to happen yet, but as you may know, I'm the vice chair of the Aquarium Board, and last week, we did the retreat for the aquarium, lasted all day. But the highlight of that was to show us what the status was of the African-American scholarship program. About five years ago, the aquarium decided that it should establish a program because there was almost no African-American participation in the sciences, the marine sciences area. And so we set up a program to give up to 10 students a year, $10,000, to go forward and, and education. It's been wildly successful. We've gotten about 10, 10 applicants a year, or not applicants, but people that we've awarded monies to. And, and at the retreat last week, there was a presentation by three of those scholars, and what they talked most about was not only the fact that this has enabled them to go forward, and they're now working on PhD degrees in the marine science area, but the sense of community that they were able to develop among themselves. And so what I'm hoping is that we can have a video at our next meeting or some other way to acknowledge this program, because it's a successful program to which African-Americans or blacks have had very little participation uptill this point. And, and I consider the aquarium to be an educational institution. I consider it to be a partner, as I think the district does with the district, and I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to, to celebrating the things that we've accomplished with that group.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez?
Thank you. I attended the Sankofa Parent Village and the Black Student Achievement Initiative Symposium, and I do want to commend the staff, the parents, and the students who organized, attended, or participated in them. As we all know, this is critical to black students' success. I also attended the Early Learning and Kindergarten Festival at Dooley Elementary School, and I thoroughly enjoyed the presentations by the educators who, like in the symposium, gave up their Saturdays to, to participate. And a whole different note, a number of parents from Longfellow Elementary School have reached out regarding the, their school's Title I funding. And I really want to take this moment to quickly address the change that will be taking place there next year. So starting next year, Longfellow Elementary will no longer be considered a Title I school despite over 38% of their students being low-income and- over thirty-eight percent of their students being low-income and generating Title I funds for our district. So in other words, even though thirty-eight percent of the students there are generating funding, those funds will not go back to their school. But this is also the case in some of our high schools, like Wilson, Milliken, Poly, McBride, where we do have low-income students, but these title, and they're generating Title I funds, but they're not going back to the school. So I just want to assure parents that I am committed to ensuring that resources that kids need and deserve are, are in their schools. And, and I'd like to continue the conversation with the district to, to look at ways, alternative ways, that we can continue to provide a quality education to our students that are in schools that are not receiving these funds. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna try and get through my report quickly because there are so many good things I don't wanna, I don't want to abandon. I attended the YMCA's second annual principal appreciation lunch. And, you know, sometimes we have a teacher appreciation week, or there's opportunities to appreciate our, our teachers and other staff, but principals don't always get the recognition they deserve. So, the YMCA recognized our principals. And I'll just mention quickly that the keynote speaker, Michael Fink, he's the director of Expanded Learning, the Expanded Learning Division for the California Department of Education. And I, I think maybe myself, as well as other people there, might have been expecting him to talk about something very educational. But what he talked about was leading with love. And I thought that was a wonderful message. And a highlight was testimonials from a couple of moms whose children participate in YMCA-sponsored events after school, and the impact that it's made, excuse me, on their families. Very wonderful. Let's see. Also, I had an invitation from our music teacher, Valerie Vernard, to join her and Baba the Storyteller at Webster. So, I had an opportunity to join the drum circle and enjoy the African storytelling. Baba the Storyteller actually studied in Africa. He speaks multiple languages. He travels around the world. He recently was in China performing his, his storytelling, and he, he plays this instrument called the chora. And he, he delivers his, his stories in English and in whatever language is appropriate in that country, wherever he is. And I personally heard him speak to our kids at Webster in English and Spanish. I know he speaks Mandarin, and he speaks three or four different dialects of, you know, African languages. He's phenomenal. It's great to watch him with the kids. Very fun. I also attended a Kinder Festival, the one at Bircham, and it was very well-attended, even in the rain. People were out there. I really wasn't expecting a big crowd, but there was a big crowd. People are very interested in our schools. I'm very happy about that. Let's see, ooh, the Family Leadership Institute. And we had our inaugural three-day conference for parents from twelve different elementary schools. We had sixty-eight parents in all. We brought in Consuelo Castillo Kick Bush from Nevada. She's engaging, energetic, educational. Parents participated in team-building activities. She uplifted parents in their roles with their children and, and just with their, with their self-worth. There was a lot of, a lot of energy in the room. It was a fabulous event. And I was there a couple of different days. The energy was high at all times, let me tell you. And it was a very positive experience. There was a graduation on the final day. And one of the, one of the moms mentioned that it was the first time she had graduated from anything. It was her first graduation. So it was, even though it was a three-day conference and there was a graduation, it was very meaningful. And I know everybody walked away a different person than, than when they came. So, I hope there's a way we can continue with this program, because as we've learned with our board governance, our students do better when adult behaviors change. When we uplift our parents as our, as the students' first teachers, then we are changing adult behaviors, and that's going to impact our student outcomes. And then, lastly, I'll just say that I went uptown for the all-district instrumental concert. The honor, the honor bands for middle school, high school, honor orchestra for middle, middle school, high school. I want to congratulate all the talented musicians, and there were plenty, and also scholarship winners. Scholarships were given to Emily Guerra from Hughes and Miles Petrick from Wilson. And then, finally, just a thank you to Ms. Batia, all the staff who made that possible, and all the music teachers for what they do for our children. And I'm proud to be a part of a district that invests in the arts. It was a wonderful evening. Our kids are so talented. And it was a free concert. You can't beat that. Anyhow, Dr. Baker, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Miller?
Yeah, sorry for the confusion. I wanted to save my comments towards the end because I knew that multiple people were gonna talk about. I know there were multiple folks in the room who were there in support of the Black Student Achievement Initiative Symposium as it is slowly but surely becoming like a staple event, at least during my tenure. It's the third annual, and I've been here three years, and so I've had the opportunity to enjoy it. And every year, it's, it's grown and been more impactful. This year, with the student panel to the introduction to some, not to those here in this building, in regards to Dr. Bettina Love, it was definitely one of those must-attend events for our black parents in the district. And so, I wanted to give a big shout out to all parties involved who helped plan, both our volunteers and those from an administrative standpoint. Thank you all for, once again, putting on a very successful event. But as quickly as I say these things about all of the great things that happened at this event, I would be remiss if I didn't also bring up the connection to why we have the event in the first place, and that is uplifting the academic improvements of our black students. And so, that is where I want to continue to challenge all of us here. As we are going to look at data going into our upcoming workshop, and we're going to look at the performance of all of our students, two, two of our goals in which are focused towards our African American students in particular, I want to make sure that we keep all of the black joy that we saw in that room in mind, but keep thinking about how we operationalize all of those great talents that we saw into academic improvement. And so, when I think about some of the organizations that were there and the opportunities for us to co-collaborate, I'd be remiss if I didn't think about an organization like Freedom School, that is taking African American students and having them in a full-blown reading program for over eight weeks over the summer. An organization like the Math Collaborative, which is over a hundred black students that are just focused on careers in STEM and mathematics. Organizations like the African American Cultural Center, with yes, they're uplifting both black culture, but they also have interest in doing, in being a tutoring program for our black students. And last but definitely not least, I think about an organization like Project Optimism, which is an organization that's centered around mentorship for our black students in the district. And so, as we emphasize the uplift of our culture and the black joy that we have in our city, in our district in particular, I would also want us to keep in mind of opportunities to where we can take this and implement it into supporting these students and helping them reach their academic dreams, as this is the main reason why we're here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Baker?
Thank you. A few items for my report tonight, and I'd also like to build on the Black Student Achievement Initiative Symposium. What a wonderful day it was for our community to see families dream with their students and to think really about a bright future and to bring so much joy into the space. I want to give special, a special shout out to Alyssa Taylor Stort and the team that she organizes as the advisory committee, which is made up of five staff members and eleven extremely dedicated parents who meet regularly and who have continued to think about ways to expand their influence and expand the work that we do in Long Beach and the High School District in service to many different aspects of our black students' experience, their well-being, and also their academic achievement. Liberating the Dream, I'll just let that be said. Liberating the Dream was the theme of this year's symposium. And Equity Engagement and Partnerships, the team that is there from very early in the morning, including Dr. Salazar and team, to greet families and to ensure that everything is well-organized for a great day. The last couple of weeks, we've had a lot of weather, and so want to just really appreciate our maintenance and operations staff. They worked through the weekend, the night before our previous storm last week, getting everything ready, cleaning drains, addressing hundreds of challenges that our schools were experiencing, really prioritizing making schools safe and clear for our students to be there, and also for, to school teams for braving the storm. I know that there was some anxiety about coming to work on Monday, but I will say that our, our teams were out. They were greeting students and ready to go, even though it was a very rainy couple of days. And special thanks to our Avalon staff. We often forget that we have teams of people that travel over to the island every day. And on a day like Monday and Tuesday, they had to enter a change in plans and then get on a, on a boat over to Avalon and go through rough waters to get to work. So, special thanks to our Avalon staff who travels daily. Just a couple more things. Just want to recognize this is National School Counselors Week, and I've seen a lot of celebrations on social media and in my time in schools this week, appreciating counselors for the work that they do, and just want to amplify that. It was stated tomorrow night is our teacher recruitment night, so if you have not heard about that, and our Teacher Seeking Employment, Browning High School at five o'clock, will have short presentations and then a lot of ways for potential teachers in the areas of special education, math and science, dual language, to, to interact with our staff. And lastly, next week is a wonderful week for our elementary students. Fourth and fifth graders will be attending the symphony concert. They, they take school transportation down to the symphony. Wonderful arrangements have been made. It involves all of our music staff to come in and experience a concert in the beautiful theater. And then to also have lessons that are taught back in their classrooms to really talk about the experience and what it means to attend a symphony. So I want to just appreciate, we had some bumps in the road, but the city of Long Beach and us, we partnered together to make sure that fourth and fifth graders could be at the symphony this year. I'm actually looking forward to attending myself. So, that is my report. Oh, one last thing. The application is out for Youth Poet Laureate. And so, for any students that receive this message, or teachers who may have potential applicants, we had a winner from Wilson High School last year. But just want to encourage those who have poet strengths, poetic strengths, to look at the city's application and put your name in for Youth Poet Laureate this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. I'm glad you mentioned everybody who worked hard to make sure our schools were safe with this storm. And I did not even consider the staff that had to travel to Avalon in that storm. I have been on a boat to Avalon in bad weather. It was so memorable. It was thirty-seven years ago, and I still remember it, and it was not fun. So that one, oh, props to those teachers, honestly. But this concludes the meeting for this evening. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is February twenty-first, although we will be having a workshop on February twentieth. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff. I know it's late. And with that, I adjourn the meeting.